Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, March 4th. And I am pleased to welcome everyone to a joint council meeting. I'm Rachel Abel. I'm the president of the school committee and I hereby call the school committee meeting of the whole to order. I'm going to do a quick roll call of our membership. Mayor Michael Cahill.
Here.
Ms. Kimberly Quelo is absent this evening. Dr. Kenan McKenzie de Franza is present. Please join us. Dr. Jeffrey Silva.
Here.
Present. Ms. Lorinda Visnick.
Here.
Ms. Karen Robinson.
Here.
And I again am Rachel Abel. The school committee is present.
Thank you very much, President Abel. I will also call to order the city council portion of this joint meeting of the city council and the school committee with thanks to our school committee colleagues for hosting us here in the school and thank you, President Abel, for your work collaborating on this meeting, which of course our city charter calls for once a year minimally. This is a special joint city council school committee meeting, special meeting of the city council, Monday, March 4th, 2024, and I will call the role in the absence of our city clerk who is preparing for Election Day. Councillor Bowen.
Here.
Councillor Crowley.
Here.
Councillor Feldman.
Here.
Councillor Hausmann.
Here.
Councillor Rotundo.
Here.
Councillor Spang.
Here.
Councillor Saint-Hilaire.
Here.
Councillor Sweeney.
Here.
Councillor Flowers. I am also here. Councillor Saint-Hilaire, would you lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? President Abel says outside.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councillor Saint-Hilaire. And a happy early birthday to Councillor Saint-Hilaire as well.
Imagine not. That's a good idea.
City councillors, on our version of the agenda, I would entertain a motion for us to take the agenda out of order. I know there are folks here interested in some of the city council business. There will not be discussion tonight, but we are referring things to subcommittee. And so in the interest of not keeping folks here for something that's not discussed tonight, I don't want to hold everybody. So I would entertain a motion to take our agenda out of order to take care of communications from His Honor, the mayor, and from city officers and boards.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to communications from His Honor, the mayor, in the absence of our clerk. I will do my best to play the role of clerk. Order number 71. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. John Swain, 60 Rantoul Street, to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee. In addition, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Ben Hacker, 23 Judson Street, Beverly, to serve on the Waste Reduction Committee. Their terms are to be effective March 31st, 2024 until March 31st, 2027. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. And we'll refer this to the Committee on Public Services. Order number 72. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request your approval to transfer $500,000 from the Police Station Construction Capital Project Fund, Fund 541, into the fire truck, into the fire development, sorry, capital fund, Fund 523, to pay for repair costs associated with the city's backup ladder truck. Now you understand my misspeak. The city currently operates a frontline ladder and as a backup ladder truck, a quint pumper ladder is used. Consistent with the city's operational practice, the older trucks are retired off the frontline and serve in a backup capacity for a number of additional years. We recently purchased a new ladder truck, which allowed the city to place the quint into the backup role. Within the last several months, the quint has been unavailable due to structural concerns relating to the frame and torque box. After sending the truck to the manufacturer for inspection, we received an outline of the anticipated work, which we feel is a necessary investment to prolong the useful life of this truck, estimated an additional 10 years. The overall price of the repairs is less than a third of the cost to purchase a new truck, and we feel with limited use in the backup role, this is the most cost-effective route at this time. We are requesting the funds be transferred from the Police Station Capital Project Fund as that project has been completed under budget and action is necessary to reallocate the remaining funds within that project budget. A public hearing will be necessary prior to taking action on this request. I respectfully ask that you schedule a public hearing at your next city council meeting to review this request. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. Councillors, I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for our March 11th meeting at 8:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine zero, so we will set that public hearing for March 11th, 8:00 PM. This is order number 73. Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a fund balance transfer from the Recreational Enterprise Fund in the amount of $150,000. The certified fund balance of this account is at $356,187 as of June 30th, 2023, so there is a sufficient balance to support this request. With your approval, $67,000 of this transfer will be placed into a capital fund project to round out the necessary funding to complete the renovation of tennis courts at the Kimball, Haskell and Cahill parks. The remaining $83,000 will be placed into the Park Improvement Fund, Fund 650, to be used on various park improvements throughout the city as needed. Please initiate action at your next city council meeting by setting a public hearing. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor. I would entertain a motion to set that public hearing for our March 18th meeting at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That carries nine zero and we will have set that public hearing for the March 18th meeting at 7:30 PM. Go to communications from other city officers and boards. Order number 74. Councillor Bowen and President Flowers, a letter to the council regarding local impacts of the crisis in Gaza and Israel. That will be referred to the Subcommittee on Public Services. For tonight, I know this may seem confusing, but that's the sum total of the action on those items tonight. There won't be further discussion. I would say that anyone watching on BevCam or joining us here who's interested in that subcommittee meeting and the next steps in the process, if you are not already in contact with one of the councillors, please feel free to email. We can make sure that people know those dates. They'll be posted on the city website as well, so that people will know when those will be happening. Thank you. President Abel, that concludes the city council business on the agenda and I think brings us to our legislative update.
Yes, and we are so happy to be joined this evening by Senator Joan Lovely and Representative Jerry Perisella. Thank you so much for making time. We figured we'd be efficient and have you to our joint council because I think a lot of us are curious what's going on at the State House and what we should be expecting. And I understand you have some information to share with us and possibly you'll take some questions.
Do you want to go first?
Sure. Thanks. Well, I do anticipate questions, so I won't go on too long, but just a quick update about what's happening. So the governor filed her budget in January, and so now it's our job to take a look at that and then we'll vote on that in April. So there's a bunch of hearings going on across the state right now on her budget. The House Ways and Means Committee and the Senate Ways and Means Committee have a joint committee and they're meeting all over the state and holding hearings to talk about it. Unfortunately, the budget picture isn't the greatest right now for the Commonwealth. We've had the seven months of revenues that are less than were anticipated when we started. And unlike the federal government, we have to have a balanced budget, so. And the governor has this ability called nine C cuts. And so what that means is if we have a budget and then she feels like the budget isn't going to be balanced, she can make cuts, and she did do that. So she cut $375 million already from the current fiscal year budget. And that includes some of our earmarks that we had for the city, including like $200,000. The whole Croft Park got cut to $100,000. So we want to make sure that when we pass this, I think that's one of the worst situations that can happen is people anticipate getting a certain budget and a line item and then it gets cut halfway through the fiscal year. So my anticipation is our budget for this year will be a lot more leaner than anticipated with the hope that you don't have to have those cuts next year in the middle of the year. But there's a lot going on at the State House besides the budget. We have a $4 billion housing bond bill that the governor filed. There was just a hearing on that about three weeks ago. It made it through the first committee, the Housing Committee today, so that got passed on. The Economic Development Bill, which I chair the Economic Development Committee, so I'll started pouring through that today. It's about 70 pages. That's a $3.5 billion bond bill. A lot of good things in there as well. So that'll be my task probably for the next couple of months, reviewing that, holding hearings and so forth. And then there's like a $1.2 billion IT bond bill to upgrade some of the IT in the state. So there's a lot floating around out there for us to tackle. And of course, like I said, the budget will be the most important thing that we'll do in the next few weeks, having hearings and then taking that up. Typically in the past, we've been able to get earmarks for the city of Beverly for a variety of things, whether it be pickleball courts or the Varian cleanup or some funding for the police station for.
Elliott Street.
Elliott Street, $250,000 for that. So I'm going to ask, because it doesn't hurt to ask, I just don't know how successful it will be this year in getting those specific earmarks. What's good about the earmarks is it just goes right to the city, those funds. It's not a grant program, it's direct funding. So we'll ask and see what happens, but that's sort of where we stand at this point.
And I'm happy to update on the school side. So as the representative said, the governor and lieutenant governor passed their budget in the third week of January at just a little over $56 billion. That is an increase over the last fiscal year. The message that we're hearing out of Ways and Means currently, and I actually had a meeting with the chair this morning, it's not my budget meeting, I don't have that meeting for a couple of weeks for my budget asks, but I was able to bend his ear a little bit this morning about what does it look like, Mr. Chair? And he's hoping that we're going to be able to level fund. So we're not going to be passing likely the same budget that the governor presented to us. And it really does remain to be seen, but as the representative said, we are below benchmark on our revenue collections for the eighth month, seventh month in a row. Actually, last August, we saw a little tiny bump and since then it's been in a decline and it seems to decline a little more each month where, as the rep had said, we've already gone through nine C cuts and some other revenue sources that the governor has had to cut from this fiscal year, fiscal year '24, which it could approach about a billion dollars. So that's painful, but so far the governor has been able to maintain this budget without some of those cuts that came back and smaller earmarks, you know, cut by about 50% all across the Commonwealth. And it's to the items that are near and dear to us, parks and the like. But we hope to make those up, maybe not next fiscal year, but in the next couple of fiscal years. You know, we are seeing as a result of the pandemic and the federal government pouring billions of dollars into our communities and all across the US, we saw, you know, a good tax revenue that we were able to collect because people were spending money. It spurred the economy, it did what it was supposed to do, we collected a lot of revenue and we have over $8 billion in our rainy day fund. I think that's historic high for the Commonwealth, but we use that for rainy day and we're not in a rainy day yet, we're not in a recession. So we will, and we can't touch that money because that affects our bond bill. So we really do have to use it under very dire circumstances like we did during the pandemic where we had to hit about half of it. We were just a little north of $4 billion and had to hit half of that just to get us through. So it's, so from the rainy day standpoint, we're in very good shape. From the revenue standpoint, we're seeing declines and we don't want us to continue to see that, but it's month to month. So Ways and Means told me this morning, just on a quick, grabbed his ear on the way out the door and said, what are we looking at? Level funded. He says, I'm hoping it'll be level funded. So that's the message today. And so on the school side, as you know, you've probably looked at your Chapter 70, the governor has been great. We are in the fourth year of fully funding the Student Opportunity Act. We have revenues that are coming in from the fair share of just a little north of a billion dollars of about, she has allocated 300 million of that to transportation, the remaining to education. Those, the two buckets that those dollars go into. I did see, when I looked at your cherry sheets, another item for the Smart Growth School reimbursement that Beverly is looking to see this year as a part of the Anchor Point, the 77 units of affordable housing. I was crowing this today in a, on behalf of Beverly in a meeting, in a housing meeting, and said, look at what Beverly is doing. Has supported a 100% affordable housing complex with supports and you'll be breaking ground on, I think, Phase Two pretty soon at Anchor Point. And that's exactly the direction we need to be going in as a Commonwealth to be able to house our residents. So very proud of that and a couple of people didn't know about that, so I'll continue to tout Beverly and how great you're doing. So on the school side, that's where the governor's budget is. As the rep said, the House will, is working on their budget now, as is the Senate. Ways and Means, the Joint Committee on Ways and Means is crisscrossing the Commonwealth. I'm not on that committee. Are you?
Yeah.
Okay. We're not on that committee this session, but we are, our colleagues are crisscrossing the Commonwealth with public hearings and listening to what folks, both on the administrative side and on the citizen's side, the resident's side, what's important to people, where they want these dollars to be spent. And we know that housing is a big piece of it, education is always critical, and so we will wait for those hearings to conclude. The House will then put their budget out in April and the Senate will follow in May. And as the rep said, we, I'm also, let us know what earmarks are, what's important to the city of Beverly on both the school and city side, and we can ask, and that will be in my budget ask. So I'm going to stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Sure. So as we've done in our previous joint sessions, we'll alternate between city council questions and school committee questions. I know that we had perhaps sent a few ahead of time. I don't know if we want to start with school committee? Is that all right?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Ms. Visnick, I know you had a number of questions. Would you?
May I, may I ask a new one? May I throw a curve ball, one that I didn't send ahead of time?
I'm sure our.
It's easy.
It's a softball, not a curve ball.
A curve ball.
Well, the Celtics win the championship, yes. I think the Celtics will win the championship.
I'm already on to spring ball. Do you know, are there any legislative changes or anticipated changes or discussion around admissions relative to vocational technical schools? Right? Some time ago, we made a change. We said 25% go to lottery versus, you know, it being like a competitive entry, right? And I think that there is a, there's a real need for us to have more spots at the Voc Tech for children who otherwise aren't going to get into a competitive entry type of a school, right? A private school. And so the last legislative action around that was to say 25% go to lottery. So do you, has there, do you know if there's been any additional conversation about that or do you anticipate any conversation about that?
There is a lot of conversation about that. I've actually met with, with the Vocational Association. And I was over at the tech last month for a meeting with their school committee on the issue. Everyone's opposed to enhancing any type of lottery where they would have, you know, a lottery for kids coming from the different sending communities and outside of the sending communities. A lot of opposition, very strongly opposed. And I had signed on to a Gateway City Caucus letter since both Salem and Peabody are gateway cities and the Gateway City Caucus went on record of wanting to have this discussion because we hear often that, and I'll speak to Essex Tech, it's the one that I know, is, you know, the way that they do acceptances is based on absenteeism, behavior issues, grades, although they're weighting the grades less, but they're still accepting students that are doing very well. And whereas, I can only relate it to my own experience going to this high school many moons ago when, with a vocational school and that, you know, if students did not want to go into like the college prep route, they went into the vocational route. And there are still many students that desire to do that and just can't get in. I will tell you though, something that's interesting that's happening in Salem is Salem has a dozen CTE programs, Career and Technical Education programs, and Salem's high school census right now is about 850 students. 600 of those students are enrolled in CTE programs at Salem High. So it's a very high number. And Salem and Peabody High Schools are, and accepted into MSBA to rebuild those schools and they're looking at it from a curriculum standpoint that they will enhance CTE programming and education opportunities and maybe won't duplicate. There's still really, it's in its infancy, but maybe we'll do carpentry in Peabody and electrical in Salem, for example. Or maybe the medical goes in one school and like the vocational goes in another school to kind of keep those together. They don't know yet, but then they would cross students, you know? The students would then go to whichever one is most interesting to them because we know that the waiting list, what is, I think the number is they're going to accept maybe 400 out of 1,400 applicants into the tech for the fall. And so you can see there's a really strong interest that students want to go. I thought I'd say, I didn't bring the stats with me, but I think about better than 80% of the grads at tech go on to college. So it really is college bound, the programming, which is okay, but we really do need more students to be able to have these opportunities who perhaps aren't college bound. And so just an example, so yes, lots of strong discussion and at the voc level from the administrative side at least and the MS School Committee, no lottery, don't want a lottery. But from the parent's side, stronger, yep. And maybe looking at these opportunities, if we're not going to build a bunch of new vocational technical schools, of having these opportunities in the high school programming as well. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. City councillors, we'll do a city council question now if there is a councillor with a question. Councillor Bowen.
Thank you. And I had said this in advance, so hopefully it's not unexpected, but you talked about housing and education, so curious about transportation and where it fits in the jigsaw puzzle. So if there are any updates on MBTA process and how it impacts us here? And then maybe to preempt Councillor Rotundo's question, any updates from Mast at the bridge ahead of an upcoming meeting? Maybe it's also just a flag for that meeting.
I get that one, huh?
Yep.
In terms of the bridge, we have a meeting tomorrow with a bunch of folks from DOT and other agencies to keep pushing them on that. There's kind of frustration, I think, on a lot of our parts about the speed at which they're making progress. So the mayor, myself, Senator Lovely, Councillor Rotundo and others will be taking part in that and we've constantly been pushing them, so we're hopeful they can speed that up and make some progress on that. As far as like the MBTA goes, the commuter rail ridership is getting much better than it was during the pandemic. It's close to where it was, although when you drive on the roads and there's all that traffic, it doesn't feel like the people are taking the T. I think there's a lot less confidence on the subway part of the T than on the commuter rail. The commuter rail does get you to Boston pretty consistently, then it's from there taking the T. It's been a lot of problems. We anticipate putting more money into the T for the capital repairs as part of that fair share amendment money. We did put about 400 million from the opera funds to the T to try to help with the backlog of what was happening at the T. I think the new general manager is trying hard. I think he deserves a Nobel Prize if he can get the T running efficiently, but it's a challenge, it's frustrating. We get alerts every day about what's going on. So we're hoping to do our best with that. There's just way more need than there is money right now, whether it be highways, bridges, trains, but there's no question that there's a lot of discussion about trying to get the T back on track, pardon the pun, but it's important because people are driving and there seems to be no rush hour. It's just always busy and we need to get people back on the train and the subways and out of their cars.
Okay. School committee? I'm going to call in myself then real quickly for school, oh, Mayor Cahill, you're a school committee.
You can go first. I'll wait around. Go ahead.
Okay. So you mentioned the fair share amendment and I think that there was a lot of optimism that that would be increasing the size of the pie. I did hear level funded. I also understand the prioritization to transportation versus primary and secondary schools, but I am just wondering, what can we do to increase the size of the pie? Is there something that we're hoping that transportation, for instance, being a priority, will lend itself towards our economic engines? Is there some strategy for not just, you know, oh no, revenues low again, oh no, another revenue is low? Is there something that we can do to proactively help drive the economic engine here in our Commonwealth? And what legislation possibly is pending to stoke the fires on that engine?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're trying to do like a roughly 50/50 split with the transportation and education with the fair share amendment. So I think some of the things that we've been looking at is like the free community college and enrollments are up at the community college because of that. Right now it's for anybody over 25. There's discussion of making it free for everybody. There's a lot of, especially like being in the Economic Development Committee, I hear it's this strange dichotomy where, you know, maybe our revenues aren't so great, but there's still a lot of people working and a lot of companies that need workers and there's some really good paying, we have 18 of the 20 largest life science companies in the United States are based in Massachusetts and they need a lot of workers and they don't need all these PhDs. They need pharmacy techs and folks like that that can make 80, $90,000 without an advanced degree. So that's one of the things that we're looking at is trying to get folks trained up for those jobs and the community colleges can do that and also working with the employers themselves. So I think that's one of the things that the fair share money can do is provide that education for folks who may not be able to afford it. They come out of there and they're going to get themselves a good paying job. That's, so that's one of the things that I think we're looking at. And like I said, so I think we're trying to do a roughly 50/50 split. You know, the migrant situation is something that has hit the Commonwealth hard in terms of the budget. It's going to be about $900 million that we're going to spend this year on that. So we may get $1 billion from the fair share amendment, but then there's that unexpected cost. We had budgeted for $375 million and its costs have gone significantly up, so that's another factor in terms of our budget situation.
Thank you for that. Councillor Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you both, Senator Lovely and Representative Perisella, for taking the time to be with us. I'll probably make some general comments and then maybe if you guys would like to respond to those. I know, Senator Lovely, you noted the difficult financial situation that the states in currently and likely will be in next fiscal year, which I certainly appreciate as a former budget analyst. For the governor's budget proposal, there's three streams of funding and really two of those three in particular that I have my eye on from the local level, which is the proposed level of unrestricted general government aid, the Chapter 70 funding, which you mentioned with the next year of the Student Opportunity Act being implemented, and then with the millionaire's tax fair share of revenue, the additional money that the governor proposed to essentially supplement Chapter 90, that additional 100 million. And I just want to make sure to advocate for at least maintaining those streams of funding, especially with UGA, but in particular for the supplemental funding from the millionaire's tax that would go towards Chapter 90 equivalent expenses and then on the Student Opportunity Act, as I'm sure we'll hear a little more of tonight. UGA, but in particular for the supplemental funding from the millionaire's tax that would go towards Chapter 90 equivalent expenses. And then on the Student Opportunity Act, as I'm sure we'll hear a little more of tonight, school expenses are really driving the overall municipal budget increase that we're likely to face as we enter our budget development process in the coming few months. And I know that Beverly is one of many minimum aid districts, so raising the floor of what those minimum aid districts receive as an increase in this coming budget would certainly help us. And then on the additional funding towards Chapter 90, that's one thing that we all talk about frequently on the city council is the big need we have in Beverly to improve our road and sidewalk infrastructure. So we certainly appreciate the work that you guys have done on behalf of Beverly and getting funding into these programs that goes to support what we're working on locally. And I want to take a moment here to just advocate as you guys get ready for the budget development process to keep an eye on those three streams of funding.
Appreciate that, councillor. Absolutely. You know, as legislators, we never want to cut UGA on Chapter 70. We want to make sure that our communities are made whole because you're depending on the numbers that come from us to be able to build your own budget. And I attended the, kind of the last part of your budget retreat on that Chapter 90 and heard quite a bit on Chapter 90 and how important that is because really, most of the roadways are maintained by our local communities. And you see, you really depend on that money. And as far as the fair share, watching that to see, you know, there's, you know, some say we're going to lose all our millionaires out of Massachusetts. Haven't seen that. You know, the projections was $1 billion. It's come in at about $1 billion. And again, transportation is getting 300 million and education at 750 million, but that also includes higher end. So we do want to make sure that we are funding our local communities, that we know you desperately need this money. Education is the biggest, biggest part of our budgets. And so we want to make sure. So I really, we really appreciate that, and we'll definitely bring that message back to Ways and Means when we meet with our chairs and they're building the budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
One of the, I know you had sent a question about the Economic Development Bill, so maybe kind of goes with what you were just asking about. So it just got filed, so it's not law yet, but I do anticipate us doing something on the Economic Development Bill. And some of the highlights that could help municipalities is she's filed for $400 million for Mass Works. I mean, Beverly got that grant recently for the roundabout by the North Shore Music Theater. The Seaport Economic Council, there's $100 million anticipated for that. Beverly's gotten money in the past for that, like by the Fishing Pier and things like that. Workforce training, President Abel, you were talking about that, like what can we do to spur our economy? There's money for clean tech, which Salem is going to have the huge wind farm, wind turbine depot over there. So there'll be jobs locally for folks. Cultural facilities funds, Beverly's gotten money for that. Then Montserrat, College of Art, and Cabot Theater have received funds from that, so that can be helpful. So yeah, there's a lot, and tourism is a part of this as well. Obviously, we think of Salem, but a lot of people come to Beverly for the theater, you know, and that brings a lot of people downtown, whether it's the Cabot or the Larkham or the North Shore Music Theater. And when those places are full, it's helped our downtown. So we want to support the arts and the culture economy as well. So those are just some of the highlights of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Cahill.
Thank you, Madam President, so much. Senator and representative to talk about. So sitting here as a member of the school committee and as the mayor, I just want to go back to a couple of things that were discussed earlier on the vocational, technical school admissions point. I have twice signed letters from the Mass Mayors Association asking for a lottery system to be mandated. I don't know if it needs to be 100%. I personally, from what I understand of things, I think it really should be 100% lottery. Certainly the directors and people involved with those schools don't want to be told that. But I'm glad that Senator Salem and Peabody are saying that loudly and clearly. They are at the mayor's level as well. And, you know, for so many of our kids who really need access to those programs, they're not really getting a fair shake with the current way of quote admitting students. Happy to hear what Salem and Peabody are looking to do cooperatively. We, not sure you know this, but we as a school district have an agreement with Salem High School, and we're sending Beverly students this year for the first time, who are enrolled at Beverly High for some courses through their career technical education programming at Salem High because we can't get enough access at the tech. So a lot of people are doing good work. I think the admissions are critical. To the fair share discussion, our schools need so much, and that's legitimate. We, you know, we need for our kids to, you know, have access to great education. At the same time, there is no doubt that not enough money is going into transportation. We all understand that. So to President Abel's point about, you know, whether the right targeted investments can grow the pie through economic, further economic growth, I think that's a great way to look at things. Certainly, as a region, as a greater Boston, eastern Mass region, our transportation system gets in the way of all of our residents accessing education, accessing healthcare. It gets in the way of our ability at the local level to support more housing. So the transportation investments we need are massive. They're investments that I don't believe the state can make on its own, but the state needs to really be able to commit big dollars. Federal government needs to commit as well. Because if you think of any major city in America that's got a transit system, subway, a legacy commuter rail where trains in and out from the suburbs, and we've got both, and we've got two of the oldest in the country, no major city in this country is doing it right because at the federal level, the support hasn't been there for generations. At the same time, every affluent European and Asian country has left us light years behind when it comes to transit. And economically, that's going to come home to roost if we don't collectively make those investments. So they're there. You know, I'm not pointing a finger or saying you got to do something. You're not doing because we're all grappling with it. But, you know, just to have a little bit of our focus on it tonight. To councillor Sweeney's points about our various local aid accounts, absolutely on that. I will say on the fair share piece that the governor is pointing towards Chapter 90, the additional amount, we already got that money in our accounts. That was not something that needed legislative action, so that additional 484,000 landed in one of the city's accounts about a month, month and a half ago. So, and, you know, I think that's how that piece is meant to go each year. So that's helpful. And so my question, after a couple of thoughts there is, Senator, you talked about level funding in the budget. So we all know how the budget process works. I'll just say it aloud for people in the audience or at home who don't, right? Governors' proposed budget lands in late January. The House has their opportunity to work through what, you know, how that, how you receive that and what priorities are of the House members as a whole, then the Senate does. So the House will be doing it in late April, Senate sometime in May. Typically, I guess always, there's a conference committee of House and Senate members to reconcile all the pieces and then put it back as a package to the two bodies and typically then forward to the governor, right? So when you say level funding, do you mean level funding of what the governor proposed, level funding of last year's final budget? Because my concern is, the governor's proposal showed extremely modest increases on both the city and the school sides of the budget. Given the modest nature of them and the scope of our own local budget, they're not going to make much of an impact. Less than that is even harder, but we recognize the way revenues are coming in month after month, that we may not get what the governor proposed. We may get a level funding from last year. We may get a cut from last year. So do you, you know, what is your intelligence telling you on that? And what is that level funding, you know, phrases you heard it today really mean?
I don't, I don't have a lot of intel on it because I haven't had my meeting yet. But I will tell you that what the Chair of Ways and Means is telling us is level funded to FY '24, level funded to this fiscal year. Is that with the billion that we're going to lose off of it or not? I don't know. So that would be a cut. He's saying level funded. I can't tell you with any surety what that means. What I will tell you though, is I, he's offered, and I'm putting together a meeting with the Chair of Ways and Means, I haven't talked about it yet, to come and meet with, I'm putting that guest list together now, but it would be for all four communities in the Senate District, the mayor's, town manager, chief of staff, heads of school committees, presidents of city councils or designees, superintendents. So really, a small group, maybe chair of the comm or a budget, a budget person in each community as well. I want to put that together and have that meeting so you can ask him those questions and he's offered. And I said, great. So I've already put an email into his chief of staff, trying to put that together for, within the next four or six weeks. So, okay. So I will circle back with everyone. It's really just in its initial planning stages today, but he's offered, so I'm going to take him up on it and get him here. And you can ask those questions directly, and we'll probably have a little more information in four or six weeks or so. Okay, is that okay?
Thanks. Thank you.
That should work. Yeah, all right, good. Because I don't know. I don't know yet. And he's just telling us to be very conservative with how we're publicly speaking about the budget. And here's the message. So I'm staying on message, but let's get him here and you can ask more questions. Great.
Councillor Hausmann.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Senator and Representative, for being here with us. This question is really directed, prompted, I guess, by a bill that Representative Perisela has filed, but it really speaks more broadly, so maybe both of you can end up commenting on it. You have, you submitted a bill to study how road repair is done after excavation by utility companies and ways in which road repair can be done. So I'm sort of interested generally in where, what prompted you to file that. But my comment before hearing the answer really is, in Beverly, you know, we talk about Chapter 90 money to help us with our roads, but, you know, National Grid right now, and I don't think it's exclusive to Beverly by any means, is going through and probably ripping up our streets far faster than we're being able to repair and replace them with fresh, smooth pavement. Part of that's being done, as you know, because of the cable project to give a new transmission lineup to KPN, which we need, which the region needs. And part of it is being done to replace, ironically, to put in new infrastructure for natural gas, ironically, but it's being done in order to prevent leaks because the infrastructure is so old. But all of it brings us back to, once they're done, our roads are in much worse shape now, under the current regulations as they're required to repair than when they open them up. Because the repairs don't come anywhere close to putting the streets back in the kind of condition they were before they were ripped up. So general question, what prompted you to do this? And then more broadly, is there any hope that utility companies, and I understand costs might get passed on to the ratepayers, but maybe it'd be taken off their, you know, allowed rate raises and come out of their own pockets, for utility companies to do a better job in helping cities like Beverly put their streets and keep their streets in a better condition?
Yeah. So, I mean, I used to run a lot more than I do now, but I still get out there and hit the streets. So, you know, certainly having that ground view of seeing what, you know, what the streets look like, especially after a utility project. And like you said, they do not do a great job of repairing them and putting them into the same condition they were prior to the project. So that's what inspired me to file the bill. So it would be experts from the Mass DOT and the DPU. The DPU oversees the utilities and DOT has expertise in road construction. And having them work together and create uniform standards on how the road should be repaired after utility work is done. So that's why I filed that bill. It's still floating around. I'd love for that to happen because, like you mentioned, you know, you can see it, when you can see like the project and maybe two years later, the repairs are crumbling at that particular part where they did the work. So that's what inspired me to do that. And so I think that's something that I would like to see, you know, if there is some uniform standard required of all the utilities and anybody else who digs up the roads, then maybe we won't have that quick disrepair of the roadway system, you know, after they do that work. So that's what inspired me to do that. It's sort of the general question too, like there's, like you said, a lot of discussion about Chapter 90. We did do it 100, an additional 175 million last year for, it wasn't specifically just Chapter 90, but a lot of different things like small bridge repair, complete streets. That's how Broadway was done with the complete streets program. So I do think and hope that we can supplement Chapter 90 again with some of that fair share money that we're getting. But that's what inspired me to file that bill.
Yeah, thank you.
Looking to my school committee colleagues, do we have a first question? Ms. Buznick, would you like a second?
I would love a second question. All right, I'm going to go with another curveball, but I'm going to go back to my first pitch. It worked so well. Voc schools, somebody's going to have to help me with the name of the voc school that is served, that serves Haverhill.
Woodya.
Woodya Tech.
All right. So their vote, whether to fund that or not, failed. And you heard extensively from the mayor and from me, and you agreed. There's all this conversation about the need for more seats in voc techs. And yet their, you know, in essence, override vote, their vote to whether to fund, to repair that school failed across the different communities. So where does that leave us? Because we have such a need for seats in voc schools. And now that school's in incredible disrepair. Rather than throw a Band-Aid on it, is it, might it be possible to have something like the fair share amendment money, some of it be directed towards filling a need such as that? Or is that school, like, we're just hosed? Do you have any ideas about that? I mean, because we can't allow that school to just continue to go into disrepair. And to honestly think that we can just throw a little bit of money at it and put a Band-Aid on the most terrible repairs that need to be done and it, for it to be a reasonable educational facility.
I hear from a lot of folks about, you know, just about their kids not being able to get into the tech, and it's very frustrating. So, you know, and they're asking us to try to help. But there is some, I know we've had, there's been some discussion with the school about, you know, expanding the footprint of the tech to get more kids in there. I think the Woodya situation was kind of unique because I think the way that's structured, like 70 to 80% of the kids come from Haverhill, but all the school districts pay an equal share. So you might have, Ipswich might only be sending 10 kids and they're paying an equal share. So I think that's why the vote failed. So I think they're, you have to take a look at the way that's structured. But you build it and they will come. And it's a very, Essex Tech is a very popular school. And I would love to see us expand that capacity. I don't know, does Beverly send any kids to the After Dark program?
Yeah.
Has that helped?
Yeah, except for the capacity for After Dark. That's why we branched out with Salem. So we had 40, 45 students attending in an After Dark model at Essex Tech, and then the enrollments were diminished down to only seven the next year. So, and/or their program. So After Dark is built off of open spaces. And so as they're filled, there's no open spaces for them to offer, so there were less seating. So we work with Salem. That partnership is, I think, you know, a really good opportunity for us. We're the first two public schools to come together and work together in that regard. And I know Josh and Steve are working, I know about their project that they're working on. I think one of the things that we're coming to is that vocational schools sort of have their own, they're on their own island as far as the decisions that can be made and things that can do. So we, as public schools, are kind of looking more at what can we do together, what partnerships can be made, what regionalization can happen, you know. And the conversations that Josh, the superintendent, and Peabody and the superintendent in Salem are having, you know, I've been part of some of those conversations as well. And that is probably the direction that we would need to go if we're going to expand, kind of looking in our own way. And so I think the After Dark opportunity is one for us, but I think there are, I think some of the call is for that four-year program, right? And getting into a four-year And that getting into a four-year seat is much more challenging. But we are continuing to expand our After Dark offerings, as well as looking at our own offerings within our school, what can we do in terms of pathways? Pathways don't have that same certification level that a CTE program has, so.
So a follow-up to that would be, when, Mr. Paracella, when you say you'd love to see the footprint expanded, maybe there's something that can be done relative to making it, lowering the bar, making it easier for them to expand, for instance, to a satellite office. And we have a fabulous Cummings Center over here, that I'm sure has an empty office space or two, where we could be housing, you know, another class. But I don't, we have the superintendent of the Aggie. I'm old, I call it the Aggie.
It is the Aggie.
NSAT, they call it the NSAT.
Thank you.
We have an associate's degree from the Aggie.
Okay, there we go. Very proud of that. We had that superintendent to our school committee meeting a while ago, and there really didn't seem to be an appetite, and it seemed to me, from her answers, that there were some barriers to being able to expand. And so, you know, there's always a cost associated with new building, but being able to expand and think about satellite and using space that already exists, and being able to certify that space, or maybe there are some opportunities there as well, in terms of, maybe, Jerry, like, think of a new bill that you could file, just like that road one is a good one. Okay, I think so.
So the Aggie tech is adding 350 seats. They're working on that right now, because they have administrative space, you know, in the old part, and the gym. And so they're building that out to add 350 more seats to the school. I think they'll be over, they'll be upwards of 1,600 or more kids, I want to say, 1,800, I think. I'm just going on memory. So they are, they're trying to squeeze in every little nook and cranny over there because of the demand. And when the tech was being thought of, right, I was on the Salem City Council when they came in. Senator Berry came in to ask us, as of sending a member of community, to commit to, you know, the dollars then, which we thought, we went, "Are you kidding me? Oh, my God, how are we gonna do that?" And we did. So with Whittier, I mean, the $400 million price tag, they're gonna have to go back to the drawing board, I would say, because I was sending communities, the voters said, "Yeah, no," which is really unfortunate, because that, you're right, that school's just gonna continue to fall into disrepair and not service the students that are there. But that's a big, that was a big nut. And, you know, no MSBA dollars, you know, I mean, they're just, it's unfortunate.
Thank you. And city councillors, if you'll indulge us, Mayor Cahill.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to follow, I guess I might ask and encourage you, as our state legislators, to take a close look at just what the vocational, technical schools are looking to expand to do. What, you know, what have they built? What are they looking to build? There is a, our own voc tech is struggling to provide electrical, such that our After Dark kids can't get into electrical, it's not offered to them. Now, if there's anything that should be growth right now, it's careers in electrical, right? And so I don't know, you know, I don't know exactly, but to the extent that vocational schools are looking to add programmatic space for programs that are typically appealing to kids who are gonna be college-bound, maybe that isn't where the investment should be coming from, or I should say, going. And I think that that's, you know, that's a fair conversation for state government to have with this, with this collection of vocational schools.
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely.
Thanks.
Are there other questions from city councillors, particularly if you haven't gotten to ask one yet? There are city councillors who did ask a question, who would like a second question. Okay, President Abel.
Are there other questions from the school committee? First questions? Third questions?
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. We have a standing question that we always ask.
Oh. Could I, I just want to make you aware of a program that actually I had a meeting on this morning, on the homeworks program. So this is, when I was actually running the seat in 2012, that's when, under the Patrick administration, we were housing a lot of homeless families in motels, if you recall. And under the Baker administration, the Baker administration changed that approach and put a lot of these families into congregate housing with supports. And now we find ourselves with a migrant crisis, and still a homeless population, and capped at 7,500 families, which is, you know, upwards of, you know, 20, 25,000 people, including a lot of children, who are now, you know, were trying to meet their needs. The homeworks program was a bill that I wrote with the YMCA back in 2013, 14, to make sure that the children that were in shelter, homeless or in shelter, can take the same after-school and summer camp programs as any child would. And we get it, I have not been able to pass that bill yet. I file it every session, it makes it through the committee, but I get it funded at $800,000. And so I was in a meeting today with Danvers on the EA. We have weekly meetings with Danvers, and about the PB and Salem families as well. And homeworks came up. And Danvers wasn't aware of homeworks, so now I want to make sure Beverly's aware of homeworks. And so these are dollars that are available to school systems, to youth-serving organizations, in the forms of grants, to be able to make sure that you're capturing students who are homeless, living in shelter, maybe in a motel, and so they can avail themselves of after-school and summer camp programs that are available through the city. The YMCA's are aware of it, because we wrote that bill, but wanted to make sure you knew about it, too, and happy to provide more information at the school level, to be able to, and the school committee level, to make sure, you know, if you need some of these dollars, they're there. So I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that segues nicely into the question that I know Ms. Buznik and I have each time you come to visit us, and that's regarding unfunded mandates, for instance, homeless transportation. It's increasingly a very large number that we see come through our weekly warrants for the cost to transport our unhoused students to and from wherever it is that they're able to secure a bed for the night. And that's just one example. I think that we have a number of items that, as a district, we are required to provide, yet there's not necessarily a corresponding earmark or budget that's provided to the district. And it's a challenge. And I think sometimes we question an individual student's monthly transportation bill far exceeds what it might be to house a family in our district and prevent hour-long transportation with, you know, a stranger, essentially, that hopefully, hopefully they end up forming good relationships with that trusted adult. But we're always looking to see what sort of advocacy the school committee in particular can do to make sure that all of our learners have the best opportunities and the best situations. I can't imagine being a young person without a home. Thank goodness I have a ride to my school and my classmates each day, but it does seem like something could be fixed or be better.
This is, if you could, if the school committee could provide this to us, when's your, when is your budget asked?
Wednesday.
With a dollar amount of what that looks, how many students, to give us just that finite information, that'll absolutely bring that up to Ways and Means, because you can't continue to chase it. I mean, it just leaves holes in your budget. And but for these students, they need to get to school and home, to wherever home is, whatever that roof looks like. And so that would be really helpful, if we could have that breakdown and present that. Really appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
My team is back there. I'm sure they're taking notes.
Okay, we'll work with Mr. Sherburne to get you some information. I think it's just been, over my last eight, and going into my ninth year, one of these heartbreaking things, I see the bill, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, we could get them..." Well, it's hard to find housing in Beverly right now, but it really just seems, like, almost cruel, you know, after so much time.
Absolutely.
So these are, you know, what drives, what helps us is the personal stories, right? So not by the child's name, but where they're coming from, how they're getting here, what does that cost, and saying, "This is what's happening in Beverly with these children." How many, to and from, and cost, that'd be huge. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to, I'll pile on there half a second. I don't want that to in any way sound like we don't want to transport them, right? If a child has connections here, by all means, we want them to be able to stay in school here and stay with those connections, and we know that transitions are difficult for children. But spending an hour, upwards of an hour, in a vehicle each way every day is not only expensive, but that, too, is difficult. And so if we could be smarter about how we're spending those dollars, and again, as Ms. Abel said, that doesn't mean that there's someplace near here that we could house them, but maybe there's someplace closer, a little less than, you know, that, whatever, yeah, you'll see, you'll see the numbers, we certainly have all those numbers. But just to be a little smarter, to spend our money a little wiser, it would be a much better situation, and I think a cost savings as well.
Thank you. I will tell you, I'm not a big fan of putting families in motels. It's not good for families, it's not good for kids. We're at a crisis level, as we all know, and so we have to, but we have to plan our way out of this, to support and stabilize every single one of these families and these children. And that just adds to it, these transportation costs, just as, it's not the best way that we spend our dollars. It's the way we have to right now, but we need to plan our way out of this.
And they're not taking the tea, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you for raising it.
Councilor Hausmann, you have a question?
Yeah, actually, I have, I have two that have occurred to me. One is sort of a general suggestion, it's the last question, if you have an answer, for you to consider. I'll ask that first, and then I'll ask the second question. Speaking of people in need who need housing, we had, not so long ago, about a year ago, a situation where we had an assisted living facility in which all of the residents were essentially evicted on relatively short notice. Not short notice, maybe for the open market, but given that they were in assisted living, and people who have fewer resources typically, and greater needs typically. The facility in Beverly that this occurred at has since reopened and is not taking pace residents. And the thought occurred to me, whether it's realistic, feasible, but I guess to ask the question, "Why not?", for there to be a minimum number, sort of like in Beverly, we have affordable housing numbers, right, for a developer to say, X number, X percent or X number, according to a formula, of your units have to be affordable. Why couldn't you have a similar kind of requirement for assisted living in which there is a minimum number, based upon some formula, for all assisted living, to have a certain number of folks on PACE or equivalent kinds of programs? So that's, I guess, sort of a suggestion. It occurred to me when I was going through the open house for that facility, because that was a real problem at the time for those residents.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
I know we sort of pressed them on that when the residents were being moved out, and when they were going to reopen, and they weren't too keen on taking Medicaid patients or PACE patients, but
Right.
I think there should be a minimum number.
Yeah, sort of spread the burden, if you will, around, rather than sort of forcing populations sort of all into one facility that financially makes it harder for that facility. My second question is a much more general question. I've spoken with both of you and some of my colleagues on the question, so it's a very open-ended question. I have my own opinion about it, but I'm interested in your opinion. Occasionally, the council is, has before it questions of certain pieces of legislation or certain areas of legislation of concern of the council. And on occasion, before the council, whether it's generated internally or from one of our citizen committees, a request for a resolution for the councils to support a particular piece of legislation, with the idea that that resolution would go to one or both of you, to say, "Hey, listen, this is something we're really interested in, and we'd like to see you supported." So not in this kind of a forum, but, you know, going through a different process to let you know our interests. And so I'm curious how you view the role of the city council, sitting in your seats, in terms of, as a body, letting you know what kinds of legislation we would like you to support, whether it's specific or general legislation? And you may have different points of view on that.
And from my perspective, you know, you represent your constituents, and you hear from your constituents, and you're telling us what they feel is important, and so to me, that's important. It's good to hear from the council about that. So, I mean, I read all my emails, so every, you know, we get a lot of emails. People don't mail letters anymore. I get Facebook messages, you know, texts, et cetera, but so all, I try to take into account all thoughts and opinions about legislation, do my best, you know, to come to an opinion as to if I should support it or not, but I think it's helpful to have that information coming from the council. Respect what you do, for sure, and it's helpful.
Great, thank you.
I agree. I would welcome a resolution from city council, from school committee. I will tell you, Salem is sending a lot of resolutions up, the Salem City Council, on different areas that are important to them. So that's ticked up this year, it's a new council, and a lot of members are taking that initiative. So please, let us know how you feel. I hear from many of you, we hear from many of you, and, you know, to put it in a resolution form, I think is very helpful, and we're tracking all of the legislation, all 8,000 bills that are now funneling either into studies or onto next committees. Rules is becoming very busy in the Senate. I chair the Rules Committee, which is the same as Bills and Third in the House. Our Bills and Third in the Senate doesn't act like Bills and Third in the House, it's the Rules Committee, and so I'm seeing a lot of bills come in. And please let us know what's important to you individually or by resolution. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we've reached a point where we've kind of run out of questions. We also have the superintendent, who has some information to share with us. We appreciate you being on the hot seat there on the panel, and thank you so much for making time to join us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all you do for our community. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll echo President Abel's thanks, on behalf of the council, and thank you for your time tonight, and as we've talked about, your responsiveness to both your constituents and to both of these bodies all the time. So thanks for giving us your time tonight and your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And Dr. Charchek, I see you have your laptop there. I'm not sure, oh, you do have some slides?
I do, and I, I mean, I can, I don't know if everyone can see it. We can try to twist it, it'll, you give it a little tilt this way, maybe? Just a little tilt? For, yeah, if that works. Hopefully, if you can, everyone can.
And these will go up on our website?
These will go on the website, yeah, eventually, so. They're really just to guide my conversation, but are you ready for me to?
Yes, please.
All right, so I'll take it away. So I have brought forward, I received a question from the president, is the president chairperson, what are you for the city council? chairperson, what are you for the city council?
A president.
President, all right, from President Flowers.
But whatever term you use is fine.
To just bring you all up to date, I think I've used the last couple of meetings that we've had, our joint meetings, to talk about our accomplishments, and then to preview sort of what some of our goals are. So that's my goal here this evening. It is, it happens to be a year that we're in the stages of building a new district improvement plan, so I'm going to bring forward some of our draft goals that we've been sharing with stakeholders. So Dr. Morgan's joining me, just because he always likes to help me out in some of these things. But what I want to begin with is just sort of a review of where we were. These are our goals from our previous year, running up until the end of this year. I know that some of you, or if you've been on the council, are familiar. I pretty much started all of my presentations off with our goal areas. In the school district, we try very hard to stay true to the goals that we create, and they really drive the decisions that we make, whether it's on budget, whether it's on programming, on all of the different ways that we run the school district. So we had four big bucket areas for the past year, creating conditions that promote equity, rigorous and consistent curriculum, innovative practices in operations and management. And so within those, that was a three-year plan. Under each category, we try to ferret out one goal or focus area that we will take, you know, that we'll take particular interest in for that year. And so this year in particular, we focused on fostering a positive school community, ensuring a whole-child approach to success, effective teaching strategies, advanced coursework, and climate action planning. And I'll go through each one of these pretty quickly for you, but just to share some of the highlights of the successes that we've had as a school district. So the first area was fostering a positive school community, and what that meant to us was a culture of respect, inclusivity, and collaboration, where students feel valued and empowered to make positive changes in their schools and communities. And so some of the accomplishments that we like to highlight for the year, we had a couple of conversations that said, one of the things we really wanted to focus on was increasing student voice, and how do we have student voice be a larger part of the conversations that we have, the decisions that we make. In keeping with that, we put together a student ambassador cabinet, that's a cabinet that's made up of 15 high school students, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We meet with them regularly. As part of that, one of the things we noticed early on was, in addition to just wanting to raise student voice, we felt like it was important to provide some direction around leadership for them. So some of our meetings were workshops on leadership, introducing them to different ways that they can use their voice, and different ideas of understanding other people and working collaboratively with each other. So that Student Ambassador Cabinet met eight times last year. We utilized that as an opportunity to hear from students around things that were important to them. It was really our first year throughout the course of it that we were able to kind of have a better understanding of what are the things that our students are wondering about, where do we feel like we need to hear more from them, we want to kind of avoid this idea of just making decisions on behalf of them, and rather engage them in that process. We engaged in a Project 351 pilot. Project 351, some of you maybe are familiar with, for years has been, we select one ambassador in eighth grade, and they take part in a statewide, across the Commonwealth, sort of community service-based project learning. But they offered out a pilot opportunity this year to train even more students within a district and create student leadership opportunities for them. So we had two of our students that attended that and became high school student ambassadors, which then in turn came back and they ran workshops for our middle schoolers. So it was students leading students, and they set up a series of two or three opportunities at the middle school where they met with a group of 30 or 40 eighth graders, and really talked with them, and were able to provide leadership workshop to the students. So that was a really nice opportunity. As you know, we have student reps on SISL and School Committee, and we continue to engage them, bringing their voices forward in our meetings. Anyone that has been to our SISL meetings or to the School Committee know that we incorporate their reports as a big part of our meetings. We expanded our peer leader program, we've had a peer leader program that was pretty strong at the middle school and had run for several years, but it hadn't been running at the high school quite as strongly. So this past year, we have really reinvigorated that, provided training to them. It involves a two- to three-day training program for the students, and it enables us to have student leaders within the building to reach out into advisory and talk with other students on some of those things. The high school continues to have a climate committee that meets regularly with the principal that shares some ideas there. I'm highlighting in my picture, and it's kind of hard to see, I know, because the screen is small, but we implemented a house system at our middle school, and if you have been at any of the events when the house system is running, you'll know that it is one of the most invigorating things that you've seen in a long time. And it's a system that's based on the Ron Clark Academy out of Atlanta, Georgia. The leadership has gone down and had some training, they've also sent some teachers down to be trained. But basically, it's really all about building that culture of respect, that culture of inclusivity. There's a lot of competition that's going on among those houses, they're awarded and they gain points for excelling in academics, excelling in community service, all different types of things. So it's been a really nice opportunity, I think, that has empowered our students to feel really good about things and have, I think they feel a sense of control at the middle school that was lacking, so. And then finally, we do continue with our responsive classroom trainings. Responsive Classroom is at the heart of the things that we do in elementary school, and we trained another 30 teachers this past year. We try to make sure that we stay on top of training our newly hired teachers so they understand all the things that are going on there. Ensuring a whole-child approach to success, this in essence is our goal around City Connects. You had a large presentation last year, as I said to Megan Sudak, you were the presentation last year, so this year we're just doing a few bullets. So she narrowed it down to just a few bullets, as you can see, some of the successes of City Connects this year. Just in brief, we reviewed and screened 2,800 students in academic, social, emotional behavior, and health. We referred or connected 13,330 services to these 2,800 students in areas such as counseling, youth development, art-based services, and many more. Of the 13,000 services, 11,000 our district provided, and generally a tier one or tier two service for enrichment and early intervention. In collaboration with the Veterans Affairs, Beverly Police Department, and other generous donations, we were able to provide toys and holiday wish gifts and clothing to over 125 youth in the city. We provided outreach and support to families to register for programs such as the Vacation Academies and Mayor Cahill's Summer Literacy Program, and we delivered the year-long Social Emotional Learning Initiative, Character Strong for all first graders in the district, focusing on be kind, be strong, and being well. This program is supported and partially funded by a generous grant from the Beverly Ed Foundation. So that's just a few highlights on City Connects, year two, a lot of successes have taken place there. We focused a goal on effective teaching strategies, strengthening core instruction, and reducing achievement and opportunity gaps by using culturally responsive, inclusive, high-impact instructional strategies. So sometimes we stay within our district to provide professional development, and sometimes we reach outside and bond, and form partnerships with providers. This year, we had three very important providers of professional development for our teachers. TNTP, which really stands for the New Teacher Project, but also works with all teachers. We have, we were awarded a special partnership through DESI for them. They have been amazing coming in and working with our middle school with a specific focus on mathematics. They came in, they have orchestrated walkthroughs for administrators, but also for teachers, opportunities to get into each other's classroom, examining our instruction within mathematics, looking at our planning and our organization, and really providing a very consistent approach to the implementation of our new math program that's in place both in, throughout the middle school. So that's been a very positive partnership for us. We received a grant from the Department of Ed for $200,000 to partner with Rivet, which is a partnership to provide specific professional development for our teachers who are implementing wit and wisdom, which is our new science of reading, research-based, knowledge-based curriculum for English Language Arts, K through five. That has been a particularly powerful partnership for us. Each of our teachers has had an opportunity for a day-long professional development. I mean, we've worked with Endicott, so they've been able to go over to Endicott and experience a true workshop model for that. And this year, the specific focus was embedding the writing into the literacy as well, so that's been really important. And then elevation training is something that our Director of English Language Learners, Caitlin Belesa, brought in. Elevation is a platform that we use that not only disaggregates our data around our English Language Learners and our former English Language Learners, but offers professional development through the same dashboard to teachers, specific to the students that are in their classes. So it's been a really powerful way for us to improve our instruction for English learners, and we're very grateful for that opportunity. In addition, we continue to hold our summer cohort, Judy Miller, who is our amazing organizer of our UDL summer programming that we do for teachers. We had another 45 teachers that went through that process this year. And finally, we look at curriculum review work, when we're reviewing curriculum on our regular curriculum cycle through Dr. Flaherty's work as professional development for all the teachers that are involved. We had a goal around advanced coursework, to ensure that all students have opportunities to enroll and succeed in advanced coursework. This chart that you see here is specific to AP classes, so you can see, one of the focuses that we've had is to make sure that we were expanding and reaching out and engaging more students in our AP classes, and you can see there's been some growth each year, and we continue that work. But we also have expanded in other ways. So we have received a grant from the Department of Ed to enter into an early college designation. Beverly will soon be considered an early college designation school district, which allows a lot of our students the opportunity to access dual enrollment classes with North Shore Community College, thereby graduating from high school with a good number of college degrees already under their belt. And that's a specific partnership that we're working with North Shore. We've also expanded our dual, our conversed discussions with Salem State around dual enrollment and dual enrollment opportunities for students at Salem State, as well as expanded some of the dual enrollment offerings that we have with Endicott. So those are just some areas that we're working within that goal. And then finally, our climate action planning. We like this one. We had a very specific goal to increase the efforts of sustainability and climate action within the school district. We have successfully created green teams at every one of our schools across the district. The green teams are facilitated by staff members in the building and consist of fifteen to, in some cases, I think, 30 students at each building, with specific focus on climate action. We've done work, the students have done work going into classrooms and working with staff, educating them about recycling and what single-stream recycling might need. We have a district-wide committee that works on that, that has not only stakeholders from within the district, but we have stakeholders from outside of the district. We have membership on that committee from Green Beverly, from New Entry Farm, and, you know, and the like. So it's been a really specific effort that we've made, an intentional effort that we've made, to try to engage in the discussion and conversation and put this at the forefront. The Pumpkin Smash, if you're familiar with that, we worked with Green Beverly on that. The What's in Your Trash campaign was a campaign, Centerville Elementary Green Team came to us last year and presented to us the work that they did at Centerville Elementary, going into every classroom, talking about waste and how to sort of avoid waste and limit waste within the classrooms. Finally, I think its air school this year has a, their green team has been working with the growing hydroponics. They, last year had one or two towers, this year I think they have three within the building, just a different way to take a look at what we're doing and how we're able to kind of look at sustainability. So that was, those were our goals from last year, and the accomplishments that we feel like we've made from that. One of the things that we've been doing this year is sort of kind of taking a little roadshow, we've been going from school to school, engaging all of our stakeholders and staff on the new goals that we have, because these are drafts right now. We have, will be coming forward to our school committee, I think probably in late April or early May, with our new three-year district improvement plan. But we've been going around and collecting feedback from a number of groups so that we can fine-tune our goals as we move forward. So I figured I'd highlight them for all of you here tonight, just so that you know the direction that we're planning on going in. I would welcome any feedback from any of you, if you want, at the end, you can certainly email me, and I'll add you in with all the other stakeholders that we have, so. As you can see, our goal, we have our goal areas, they're very similar, but they're a little refined, that's what we often do, we take a look at what have we done, and what have we been successful with, and where do we go next? Three overarching areas this year are designing our equity continuum, diversity, belonging, inclusivity, and equity, and Dr. Morgan's going to help explain a little bit more about that. I feel like we're kind of trying to take that next step, so, and he'll have more to say about that as he goes. High-quality professional development is also kind of refining, we talked about highly effective teaching strategies, but looking broadly at high-quality professional development, and what will that look like? And then innovative practices, which sort of incorporates some of the others. So I am going to, oh, these are our specific areas, we're going to go through them, so I'm not going to read through the whole slide. Emmett, turn it over to Dr. Morgan.
Thanks, Dr. Trocheck, and good evening to each of you. Our first district improvement plan goal focuses on creating the conditions that promote equity. Equity in education in a real sense is really about developing all of our students. It's about supporting informed and well-educated citizens who are the foundation for stronger communities and more resilient societies in the future. And as a means of gauging our progress on embedding equity and identifying areas where we might improve our existing work, we facilitated a climate survey with our district staff and families. The first chart going to our next slide in this section displays the results from our staff respondents. We'll give you a couple seconds to take a look at that. While the next chart that follows reflects the results from our family respondents, and you'll notice similar results between the two respondent groups. I want to also add that there are regular opportunities for our students to share their perspectives on how we're doing as a district team. Stakeholders feel collectively that we have done and continue to do a good job standing up equity in our school district. We also have respondents who noted that there were opportunities for us to improve the work that we're doing. So that's one of our folk I in our 2024-2027 district improvement plan. The next slide is our pathway for equity. Research indicates that it takes about 10 years for equity to truly get embedded into a public school district. The orange line that you see drawn between the diversity and belonging columns represents where we are currently in our district level work. Our chosen process is a continuum, as was mentioned a little earlier, which moves from diversity to belonging, from belonging to inclusion, and then from inclusion to equity. If we can use a parallel of sorts to describe these terms, diversity is like being asked to the party. Belonging is how comfortable and welcome we feel going to the party. Inclusion is likened to being asked to help plan the party, and when we finally get to equity, we are able to redefine what the party entails, who has the power to plan the party, and if there should even be a party at all. The work of diversity, belonging, inclusion, and equity is not just something that we do once a week. Instead, it is an experience that we embrace, really is a major part of our everyday practices, and essential to how we grow together to build a stronger, trusting, learning community. Dr. Trocheck.
All right. So, again, thank you for joining me for that, because I think we know that we have work to do, and we are, I think, very, I think we're very proud that we have a plan and a path, and that we continue to do that work. So each year, we refine and readdress where we are and what we need to do. So that was the first goal. But we also believe that underneath designing our equity continuum, it's important for us to think about addressing chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is a really big problem across the district, across the Commonwealth, and actually across the country. There seems to be sort of a different atmosphere around attendance. I know when I was growing up, no one missed, people would never miss a day of school, and so I think we have to get back to trying to figure out what it is and how do we get students to school every day. Again, when we look at attendance and how we categorize attendance, and this is work that is, we have been doing with DESI, good attendance is really considered a student who has missed fewer than 5% of school days. That means less than nine days in a school year. At-risk is a student who has missed between 5% and 10% of school days, or between 10 or 17 days a year. And chronic absenteeism is a student who has missed 10% or more of school days, that means 18 days or more in a school year. So if you're like me, you look at 18 days and you think, wow, that's like a lot of days to miss. I even think nine days is a lot to miss. We are certainly cognizant that we had a recent health crisis, and we understand that, you know, we want to make sure that students know when they should stay home, when they're not well, but I think the trends that we notice is that students are missing more days than just days for absences for a particular illness. So, again, we have some data that we've collected that regards that. We're looking at, this was a data that was collected on December 31st, so when the school year was a little, not quite half there, but almost halfway. When we look at the students who are trending towards chronically absent, that meant students that had seven or more absences. 23.5% of the students at Beverly High School had seven or more absences. 17% of the students at Beverly Middle School had seven or more absences. 16% of the students at the elementary schools had seven or more absences. And this is the first time we've looked closely at our And this is the first time we've looked closely at our preschool, and we, we've noticed that 25% of the students in our preschool had seven or more absences. And this is really crucial because in, in line with what we're doing with City Connects, one of the things that has been identified is establishing those patterns happened very early on. So when you look at the early years and when you look at early childhood, it's a time, you know, it's a time for us. So we want to create a stronger focus on what we're going to do around that. So, and, and while this is probably alarming to some of you who may not have seen data like this before, this is the data that you will find that's pretty much across the whole Commonwealth. This is not a Beverly unique situation. This is, this is pretty standard wherever you look in the communities that surround us. I'd like to make a, make a note that in our recent accountability, we all received the highest percentages of improvement. This is an improvement. We had a high level of improvement in chronic absenteeism, but we know that we have a lot further to go. So I want to, I'm going to go back just for a quick second to show you the, the general idea of what we hope to do to address that, because I think it's kind of important for everybody to understand, how are you going to address that? So these are some of the benchmarks that we hope to accomplish over the course of this next year. We want to clearly communicate attendance expectations and policies and raise awareness about the importance of regular attendance and its impact on individual and team successes. We want to collaborate with health professionals in the community, providing letters and handouts to share with the community regarding the importance of consistent attendance at school. We want to engage PTOs and school councils in raising awareness among families. We want to implement attendance tracking systems to monitor and manage attendance effectively. We want to develop message campaigns for school events and family information nights, use communication tools to send reminders and updates about schedules and important events. And we want to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of attendance initiatives through data collection and analysis, regular feedback from students and teachers, and ongoing assessment of outcomes. We think this is a really important issue, because if you're not in school, you're not getting the instruction that we're working so hard to plan and to provide. So this is just a one area that we are working on. So I'm going to try to find my way back to, I'm going to try to find my way back? Had to take the long way. There we go. So that, that's an image. So the, a next one under high-quality professional development, again, looking at high-impact teaching strategies. We have been working very closely with teachers to try to get their feedback on professional development and what works and what doesn't work. Again, and the high-impact teaching strategies was a goal from last year. We felt like from the data that I'm going to show you now, that we wanted to continue with that same goal in that same vein. So we, again, surveyed about professional development, what people, what teachers were hoping to find, whether, hitting the mark. We took this data to sort of use it as a point of reference, that maybe we need to continue to focus on this and continue to find ways to work. These were our results from our teachers. This were, was the results from our families. So professional development will continue to be a goal for us going forward. Just breaking it down a little further. And then finally, we come to our last goal area, which is innovative practices. And so we had, we took a look at two different areas under this. One of the areas we want to focus on is expanding civics understanding. We think that there's a lot of evidence that this is a really great area for us to focus and to expand upon with our students, to make sure really that they have the tools that they need as they graduate high school and have a better understanding of that. So we took a look, we did some survey data on project-based learning that we've utilized. Again, this is survey from the staff as to what are some effective ways for, to take a look at accomplishing this? And again, this is the family results. I'm going to go back and just share with you what each one of these just quickly means so that you know, again, what we're talking about. So in terms of, this is the, what we mean, what do we mean by expanding civics understanding? One of the areas that we're going to look at is implementing a comprehensive civics education curriculum that covers topics such as government structures, the Constitution, rights and responsibilities, and current events. Fostering critical thinking skills by encouraging students to analyze and evaluate information, form independent opinions, and engage in respectful dialogue on civic issues. Addressing digital literacy and media literacy to help students navigate and critically assess information in the digital age. Ensure that civics education is inclusive, diverse, and reflects the perspectives of all students, promoting an understanding of different cultures, backgrounds, and experiences. Incorporate elements of global citizenship to help students understand their role in a global community and the interconnectedness of global issues. And empowering students to actively participate in the decision-making processes within the school community involving school councils, forums, and other mechanisms for student voice. And then finally, in terms of our promoting climate change awareness, one of the shifts we wanted to make with this is that we, in the past, we were focusing on what we were doing within the school community, how we were, how our operations were within the schools. But this year, we wanted to shift our focus to raising awareness and empowering the students and having a better understanding on who they are as citizens in our world and what impact they can have. And so the benchmarks for this is to identify areas of the curriculum to develop environmental literacy and improved understanding of climate science, environmental issues, and the interconnectedness of ecosystems. Exposure to interdisciplinary knowledge by integrating climate-related concepts across various subjects. Increased community engagement through participation in local environmental initiatives and projects that address climate issues. And exposure to potential career paths in environmental science, sustainability, renewable energy, and related fields, preparing students for future green careers. And a heightened awareness of the consequences of human activities on the environment, encouraging responsible decision-making. So those are the areas of the, of the, that we hope to focus on in terms of our district improvement plan. I'm happy to answer any questions, or more importantly, I would invite you all to send feedback to me. One of the things that we've been doing is at each one of our stops, we've had all five goals out, and we've been asking people what resonates with this for you and what is missing. And so we've got some great feedback. We'll be refining and changing some of them a little bit. Hopefully, we'll, they'll be fine tuned in time for presentation for the school committee. So that's what I got.
So I think the school committee has Dr. Turocek's ear most of the time, so I would ask the president flowers, if you want to open it up for questions?
Thank you, President Abell. Thank you, Dr. Turocek, and thank you, Dr. Morgan, as well, for your presentation. And also, thank you to Megan Sudak for her role in contributing to the City Connects part. It made me laugh a little bit, Dr. Turocek, when you said she's distilled it down to a few bullet points. That tiny font looks like how I wrote papers in high school to try to fit a maximum number of pages, but I respect it. Councilors, are there questions for Dr. Turocek or Dr. Morgan?
I have a question. Thank you. Sort of may connect to the goals, but I had a question bubbling up recently from constituents regarding honors math classes and curriculum changes.
Yep.
How does a decision like that play into the goals and what was the goal of that particular change?
So first of all, no decision has been made about anything. One of the things, and it actually aligns very closely with one of the goals, we're looking to make sure that we have access for all students to advanced placement courses and honors courses and advanced coursework in general. We know that there are barriers that come up for some students when tracking begins too early in an educational career. And so we're exploring many ideas and have, are making various proposals and accepting feedback from people on taking an opportunity to look at how and when we begin acceleration. We certainly aren't stopping acceleration. Our goal would be for every kid to get all the way to Calculus BC by the end of their high school career, if that's what they so choose, or, you know, AP Chemistry or AP, whatever it is they want to take. That's our goal is to increase.
Give a lot of people the HIBs.
I know, I know. I never, I never took Calculus BC myself, so I have to admit that. But our goal is to identify the right time for acceleration. And how do we do it so that students are getting what they need and have the good, strong foundational skills they need for good decision-making, and that we open those doors for those opportunities to all of our students in Beverly? So we've been making presentations to school committee, how something like that works, if you mean the process. The, any major programming decision that impacts curriculum is presented to the school committee, and the school committee takes a vote as to how, how we go forward on that. So I will say, we have been very grateful to the feedback that we've gotten in, in the first few presentations. Any proposals that we've made are for effective FY26, which is the 2526 school year, not the current school year. School committee has already voted and approved the program of studies for the high school, which is something that they do every year. They vote on the program of studies every single year. So that's already been accomplished, and now we're just trying to make the right decision. It really is challenging when you look and examine the data and see that tracking is in place. There are some students who are limited in their opportunities and in access to advanced coursework by the shared nature of the way that some of our courses have been tracked. So we're trying to figure out the right way to do that so that it benefits everyone, so that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor. Are there other city council questions for Dr. Turocek, Dr. Morgan, or her team?
Thank you. Just a general question, since we were talking a lot about the state funding situation, and we won't be talking exactly about budget for another little while at least, but just if you have anything that you're thinking about in terms of budgeting or reactions to what we heard from our state legislators, or anything you think that's helpful for us to hear at this point in the year?
I was very happy to hear. I don't know if it was councillor Hausman, whoever suggested that they raised the threshold from 30 to 60, or 100, I would say 100 per student. That's, oh, councillor Sweeney, I don't know who, but somebody made that, but the conversation, we are, we are a minimum aid district, again, right? We weren't a minimum aid district for the last, FY23 and FY24. We received incremental increases that were exponential over our per pupil Chapter 70 funding. The formula and the way that the formula has worked has, we have slipped back into, as have about 70 other communities that went one way or the other, into a minimum aid district, which means we're only going to get $30 per student. So as high as that threshold can go, the better it will be for us. So in, just in thinking about that, I think that's really important, so.
Thank you. Other city council questions?
I, oh, councillor Spang.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight, and I appreciate the focus on including diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging in the schools, and also on focusing on civics education. And just wanted to highlight that I know it's something that Mayor Cahill spoke about in our inauguration, about starting a youth council perhaps. So if there's any ways that we can collaborate with the district and help support the civics education, I am throwing my hat in the ring to help with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other city council questions or comments?
I have one question, if I may. I was listening attentively to part of the presentation about chronic absenteeism, because I do understand that that's an incredible problem, not only here, but in districts all around, as you mentioned. And I just wondered if you had thought about, I know you talked about partnering with medical offices and local medical professionals, which I also think is a great idea. I was curious about, one of the questions that I've received about this from other, other residents, other parents, is particularly, I think it's on people's minds right now, because the middle school is doing a competition around attendance to try to, I think, increase student attendance, using, among other things, prizes, which are always appreciated by all of us. But also, I think, positive peer pressure, and I don't mean that in a dismissive way, but, you know, sometimes I think peers holding each other accountable is really helpful. I did notice on the list, and this is the question I've gotten from people, that I'm just curious if, if you and your staff have already thought about this, or partnering with local doctors' offices to think about this. Some of the reasons not to stay home included, in quotes, just don't feel well, which I can definitely see in some cases. And in some cases, there's that general day where you really don't feel well, you probably shouldn't be out and around other people, but you're, it's difficult sometimes to even get a doctor's appointment for a one-off, where parents may not be able to. So I just wasn't sure if you all had had any further conversation about, sort of talking with families broadly about, you mentioned it, when are the times that you really should stay home for health reasons? Even if it is just a one day where you can't really put your finger on it, and, and how do you make those decisions? And how do parents go about getting a doctor's note if that's what's needed? I don't know if that was part of your conversation.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, it's such an interesting question, because if you asked that question in 2018, every parent you talked to would have said, well, if they're fever-free for 24 hours, then they're going to come back to school. Or if they don't have a fever, they're going to go to school. So what used to be, how we just viewed, how do we decide whether or not a student should go to school, was completely like the rest of the 90 other things that involve education, uprooted and upended and, you know, with the pandemic, right? And the change, everybody's trying to refine where that normal is, you know, where, where does it lie? Again, I would, I would say that right now, we're back to where we were. If your child is fever-free for, if they have a fever, then certainly they should not come to school. If they're fever-free for 24 hours, then they should come back to school. If they don't have a fever and you suspect that they're just having a, you know, a bad morning, and then get them off to school if you can, because I know that it's hard to believe, but those very groggy kids turn into totally different children at 9 o'clock when recess hits or when snack time comes. And so, I mean, it's just using good judgment. Our nurses, I think, are working really hard to make sure they're providing really good guidance to families. And so I'm hoping that, that, that becomes the norm again, that people sort of take a look at that and, and use that same sense of judgment that they used prior to the pandemic as we kind of hopefully have turned the corner here, so.
Thank you. If I can ask one follow-up, that's really helpful. I think the other question that I've heard from people, and I guess I have, I have myself because I don't have a good answer. I know there's also a distinction between an excused and unexcused absence, and I guess I'm curious, it seems to me that that's a mechanism for attendance taking sort of within the school, but when it pertains to the numbers that you showed for absenteeism, an unexcused absence is the same as an?
Those are all absences, not excused or unexcused.
Okay. So when we're talking about absenteeism, it's sort of the total number?
I'll tell you the truth, I'm, I'm kind of shady between what's the excuse. It's a really complicated, a complicated litmus test, right? But that data that I showed you was all absences. Just all absences.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Any other city councillors with questions, comments? Okay. Take a brief pause. Any school committee members want to put Dr. Turocek or Dr. Morgan on the spot? Okay. I think that accomplishes our agenda for this joint council. I think it has been a wonderful tradition for us to follow our Home Rule Charter, of course, but to have this opportunity to meet together in about the March timeframe. We will be obviously heading into our budget conversations as we get into May and June. And so I think Dr. Turocek has left open the invitation if we have suggestions on the district improvement plan.
I'll forward this out to you as well, so you'll be able to click on the links and read the goals without me going 100 miles an hour, and you'll have a chance to take a look at them. And really, what I would love is any feedback on what resonates with you about that goal, what you think might be missing in that goal, because that's the questions we've been asking of all of our stakeholder groups. And it's just really helpful as we fine tune and finalize our goals.
Yes, and certainly, this is part of what drives our budget conversations, as the budget is a reflection of our goals and our wishes and desires and our values. Thank you, Ms. Wiznick. Okay. I think you need to close yours first, because I opened first.
That is true. Thank you, President Abell. Yes, I stand with you. Well, I'll just echo the, the words of thanks from President Abell to our legislator, legislators who came and presented to us, Dr. Turocek, Dr. Morgan, you and your team. And thank you to the school committee for coming together with the city council. Thank you, President Abell, for your collaboration. As President Abell said, this is prescribed in our, in our city charter, but also is, to my mind, always such a positive experience, and the opportunity to come together is these two bodies doesn't always present itself, and yet we're working in tandem in so many ways. So appreciate all of our school committee colleagues. And, and again, thank you for arranging our location with BevCam and also with the public schools. And thank you to Kim in the BevCam, not booth, tonight, but thank you for being here, making sure that the meeting is live streamed, as always, much appreciated. Councilors, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second?
All those in favor. Thank you very much. The city council is adjourned.
And Dr. Turocek has one thing?
I just have one more thing. I just want to acknowledge the administrative leadership team that has joined me back here. They have, you know, they're here. I just want to thank them for coming and for all the support and help that they give me every year, so.
And there's no school tomorrow, because it's a voting day.
There's no school. There's school for us, but not for students. Correct.
Okay, school committee, please help me by, motion, second, all those in favor. There we go. You are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you again, Beverly.
Thank you.